Are we on?
Don't hit your head. All right, Nolan's.
Just a minute.
This one isn't working. Got it, yep, I got it, thank you.
There's a switch on the back.
I got it, perfect.
Hit this button?
Good.
Yep, perfect, thank you.
There's a sliding switch on the back and then you have to push that. There you go.
It's technological. You can vote for that.
Okay.
Two minutes, not gonna work.
Thank you.
Everyone sit, don't Nolan, I'm gonna hit the gavel.
Go, I'm ready.
We'd like to welcome everybody here to this special Cache County Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 17th. We'll go ahead and we'll start right in, we'll have just a short opening by Mark Hurd.
And I'd like to give my opening in the form of a prayer today. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the blessing of an opportunity we have to gather here this evening to participate in our local government and to, or we, the members of the council, to be here to represent the voice of the citizen's infantry in our, in the governance of the Cache County. We're grateful, Father, for the freedoms we enjoy and for the peace and comfort we were able to feel. We just bless you, pray for blessing and peace to be with us here in the Cache County at this Christmas time. We're grateful for the purpose and opportunity we have to recognize the blessings in our lives and to be able to choose to participate and worship as we choose. We're grateful for the health and strength that we have been blessed with and for the opportunity that we have to access, to medical care and to be able to have our needs met and to have programs to ensure that we can provide care to those in need. We're grateful for thy hand in all things, we pray for thy Spirit to abide here this evening. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Also, will you please rise and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. I was gonna actually do something at the very end, but this would allow, if we do this right now, this would allow maybe a little more time for others that are tuning in. Let's go ahead and, is that okay if we go ahead and move on that? Then Andrew, would you bring that up, up front if you would? Carl, would you stand? Are you standing now?
Yeah.
Okay. Carl, there, I hope when you look at that, you look at it as many memorable years of service and working with some councils in the past that have hopefully enriched your life in every way. You'll be missed.
Well, thank you very much.
We appreciate you doing everything that you can for the county and everyone here within the county. And so we'd like to just to make sure that you take that home and put it where you can be reminded that you, not just because of who we are, but the service that you've accomplished here.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what to say except that the service has been great because of who you are and who everybody in our county is. So, I appreciate it very much, thank you. They've been wonderful years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna turn the time also, Mr. Zook, you've got a presentation too?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Carl, I have something for you here from the Governor. It's a certificate of recognition presented to Carl Ward in honor of your years of dedicated service to the people of Cache County in the state of Utah. And on behalf of the Governor and Lieutenant Governor, I'd like to present this to you and thank you for your service, Carl.
Well, thank you very much. I don't deserve all this stuff.
Yes, you do, yes, you do.
Okay, there at number two on our agenda is basically the public hearing and opening of the 2024 budget. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, that's always good, yeah, thank you. We're jumping way ahead here. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move and prove that we approved the agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thanks, appreciate that very much, Catherine. I'm kinda looking very forward to the end of the year, I guess.
Yes.
So, at that point, Wes, we'll turn some time over to you with a little bit of explanation on the budget for us, then we'll open it up for public hearing.
So, in appropriations, we went through quite a few different accounts to try to make sure none of the accounts were exceeding budget. But as I dove into state code and also I looked at the county financial code, I didn't see anything that dove specifically into accounts not exceeding budget, but departments as a whole, it's the only detail I could find. And so I eliminated quite a few of those entries and just simplified it. So we'll go ahead and dive into that. So with these changes, we have about 907,000 in changes to the fund balance. It's kinda summarized there in item one, and I'll go through the detail below. So, part of what we're doing in preparation for the 25 budget is we're funding, moving some funds into these different capital project fund. We've got an amount coming out of the tax administration fund. So we're setting up those funds. So we're transferring out basically three and a half million from the general fund to the capital projects fund in anticipation of that being spent next year. So we're simply moving fund balance. In the tax admin fund, we have about 35,000 that we're moving over. And so, you know, that's a big part of just moving the funds for capital projects next year. Entry number three is the ARPA fund. So it's a little bit potentially high in what we're recognizing for budget, but until we get to the end of the year, maybe into January, I really won't know what the balance is of what was completely spent before December 31st. We'll need a little time to get invoices in, get them entered. So, you know, it could be substantially lower than that, but...
Quite a few open POs on that one, too.
Correct. We're also recording a transfer for the airport capital projects fund. So, again, this is moving money out of the airport operating fund into the capital fund, and then we'll be funding those capital projects out of that separate fund. Entry number five is related to municipal services. Same thing, moving it into the capital fund. Council had requested in a 9/25/24 meeting to put $1,000 towards UAC's lawsuit, the state of Utah, for land. So that's recognizing that $1,000 that we'll need to contribute. The public defender, early on in the year, in February, we had an increase in salaries and benefits. And for the employees there in the public defenders department, there's just a few of them, a few employees, but we're recognizing the increased costs there that wasn't previously budgeted. IT, there's a number of different projects that have been grant funded that Bart has completed. And so a majority of that amendment eight is related to those grant projects. Number nine is really getting the salaries and benefit costs in the right department. We had budgeted too high in elections and not enough in the clerk budget. In the sheriff's department, we are moving some monies. The reason I kept this in is because we're moving some monies from Department 4205 over to 4210 to cover personnel costs that ended up being in 4210 instead of 4205. Sheriff's administration, we have some different expenditures there. We are using some fund balance, 237,500 across a number of different accounts there. Overall, I think it's really just getting the expenditures lined up in the right department for the sheriff's office. It's not so much that we've, you know, exceeded cost among all the departments as a whole. It's just getting the right costs in the right department. The sheriff is requesting 30,000 for funding to remodel the third floor. They're going to take over that space. And so they were needing some money to set it up, get it painted, furniture, et cetera. Number 13 relates to medical expenses at the jail. It is a health services contract. 14 is similar in that we are using some fund balance, about 825, in that corrections department. In the rodeo, number 15, Bart asked that we present this and show advertising increasing 10,200 and reducing his contracts budget. Do you recall what specific advertisement he was doing? I don't know.
I think he's boosting the sponsorship side, to thank the sponsors.
Treasurer, we're boosting his budget 4,000, just based on actual cost of postage. Visitor's Bureau is requesting 97,000 in advertising. And we're basically just decreasing budget there. There's no use of fund balance there. The airport, the Union Pacific lease, one-time payment to catch up with the new contract amount. Debt service, we are setting up the budget for the debt service for the open space bond or GO bond. Item number 20, we are, we don't know that we'll end up using the full amount of this, but we need to give Matt some flexibility when it comes to the ARPA projects. We believe that we'll expand, you know, when we last looked at it, we have about 6.9 million in projects and we have six and a half million in ARPA funds. So we could eliminate a project, but then we would go without fully spending ARPA funds. So if they're gonna fund it partially, we want them to fund that. Item number 21 is a RAPS-funded project related to trails. And 21 is basically increased billing and collection costs. From what we're seeing, we're gonna need to appropriate about seven grand more there in the one department. It looks like, do we have a duplicate entry? I'm seeing a duplicate.
No, so the difference between the two, so number 21 is for the billing and collection costs due to Brian Potts billing out ambulance bills. And then number 22 is the collections side. So once, after Brian Potts, after, I think it's 90 days, he sends it to collections and so that's the fees from the collections cost from when it goes unpaid.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have two line 21s, did you notice that?
Two 22s, yeah. In fact, it looks like our numbering's not quite. We'll have to fix that. Item number 23 is to purchase a vehicle to replace the 2005 Tahoe at Station 150. One above that, increased ambulance assessment from the state of Utah due to increased ambulance call volume. Senior Center charitable donation, we received a charitable donation and we are passing those monies on to the senior center in the way they were intended to be spent. And then we've had a number of different ARPA projects that Alma has kinda kept you up to date on. Basically, everything there highlighted below the blue, ARPA projects awarded by council on November 12th. So there's a number of them, I won't necessarily go through each one. And then the last item that I wanna kinda discuss with council, Bear River Mental Health to match actual costs. We are receiving additional funding from the state of Utah to pay for this. It's with Bear River Mental Health. When I initially looked at that, it appeared to me that we had nine months of billings in there. We didn't have nine months of billings, we only had six. So when we dove into the detail of it, the revenue's gonna be much higher, that we're gonna get reimbursed, but we're also gonna have that cost. And so, and that's it, that's all for 24. Any questions?
What's the net change to our general fund from these amendments? Is that on the page nine?
The 907.
Is that the 907 at the top of page one?
Yeah, yes, it should be.
No, the 907 in amendment number one. It's just a preference between Cameron and Wes. So Cameron liked to have a revenue account to account for the use of fund balance and an expense account for addition of fund balance, so anything that was given back to fund balance. But I think Wes just has a preference to just use the same account so that that way there's no confusion, that way we're not using fund balance. Yes, we just have it all in one. So we're just taking it out of the expense account for an addition to fund balance and we're putting it into the use of fund balance.
Now, as I understand it too, though, isn't this the, isn't that the sum total?
Yeah. Well, so that's a minus, so we wanna look at this page. But I think it's because we're setting up all those capital funds, because it's 11 million.
So, so the use of fund balance is 11.9.
What page is that?
But, but it's, a lot of them are transfers to the capital funds.
On page seven.
Yeah, big one.
So it's page nine for you guys.
Nine. Thank you, Andrew.
Okay.
But I think it's because we're setting up those capital funds and ARPA.
What is, what is the bottom line to those general fund? I think there's more.
Do you want to just tabulate that? I think it should be the 907, but... Well, no, it's not, because we're contributing quite a bit out of, I mean, we're moving three and a half million out of the general fund.
And eight, eight million of that goes to deferred revenue instead of fund balance.
That, too. So...
So it was the 11 and nine?
So if you notice, items two and three, you know, you've got three and a half million related to the transfer to set up the capital fund. And then you've got 8.1, that's also, but it's not, it's not moving the unrestricted balance, it's moving a unearned revenue. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It's essentially moving the liability, so 335?
I think so, because we're adding 907 to fund balance there and then with those ones that we're using for fire and sheriff and some of these others. I think that's gonna be the net.
Double check it, if you would.
Okay, we'll actually then go ahead and we'll have the public hearing, then we'll go from there. There's more questions later. At this point, we'll go ahead and we'll open up the public hearing, all those that would like to speak. You can come up here to the microphone, please state your name.
Move to close of public hearing.
Second. Moving second, we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I didn't give you much time to sit, to just sit very long there, Wes.
You want me to touch upon the next agenda item, why she's...
Well, let's, Nolan, let's hang on, just want, any questions, though? While we're right there in the budget portion, any other questions right now? Or should we wait and then we get the final amount there that we can talk about it here in a second? Is that, would that be okay then?
Yeah, I'm with Catherine, just knowing that total impact.
Thanks, Wes, we'll just, we'll wait, we'll wait on that one here in just a few seconds.
Just one quick question.
You bet.
This will then clarify and take care of any audit issues? And that was one of the concerns, was that some of these things were not...
Correct.
Being reported in a way that met the departments for the audit, but this, this will take care of that.
Yes, so if any department expands beyond what the council approves for that department, the appropriation for the year, it's an audit finding. And so we're trying to avoid that.
Thanks.
Okay, why don't we go ahead, Wes, then, well, actually, let's go ahead and go to 3B on imposing the county options sales tax for public safety. Let's go ahead and talk about that one. That was passed last time. Appreciate everybody coming. And we've got some, a little bit more information that we've collected that we can, we'll talk about that here in a second and...
Mr. Chair, could I just add a little more context to that?
You bet, Taylor, please.
Utah Code 59122216-2B says that a county legislative body of the third through sixth class, Cache County fits in that, that imposes a sales and use tax shall specify the percentage of the revenues the county will receive from the sales and use tax under this section that will be allocated to fund uses described in this section or for public safety purposes. So the reason for this change is state code requires that allocation breakdown to be part of the resolution that you need to specify. So that's the reason for this change.
Okay, and with that, Wes has done also some homework for us and shared some things.
Well, and I'll just...
Over to you.
I'll try to be brief.
Oh, you're fine. Chair.
Yeah.
I would say that since this is something that was added to the agenda last minute and this is a special council meeting, under Utah code, there has to be a motion made to be able to discuss this matter and then everyone here has to approve it. Just wanted to say that first.
Okay, I'll accept that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Second, motion has been moved and seconded then, that we go ahead and revisit, right? And look at Resolution 2024-28. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? It's unanimous then, and everyone's here. So, thank you, Andrew.
I'd just like to thank the council for being here and discussing this item. If you can switch over, I just want them to see kind of a schedule. My thought process in putting this schedule together, you know, I suggested maybe 20% per year would move towards transportation. So in the initial year, you've got 6.6 million approximately in revenue over nine months. Over the next 12 months in 2026, you know, we're gonna have approximately 8.8 million. My thought is if we move 20%, that's about a million seven. Keep in mind, council, that each year with kind of growth that we experience just in our revenue, we may get, you know, an increase of a million to a million and a half from our different revenue sources in the general fund. And so, you know, I think we need to probably have the ability and flexibility to take steps towards moving it towards transportation. You know, we need to look at maybe what the cities are willing to fund towards public safety and factor that in as well. This can be, you know, if we get a year down the road and we've made a change, or we've changed our mind on how we want to address this, we can hold another meeting, go through, submit the same paperwork to the Tax Commission and make changes. So nothing's set in stone, other than I'm just suggesting maybe we put a schedule like this, you know, kinda suggesting that we move 20% per year towards transportation. And that's kinda the general thought. It allows council some flexibility again in potentially, you know, when or if they need to do property tax increases, you know, time to evaluate that and is another revenue source. We are somewhat limited, you know, in general fund in revenue sources that we can tax on the public. And so if we are gonna move this towards transportation without cutting services, we'd have to, you know, look to do property tax increases. I didn't like the idea of, you know, moving, you know, 60 or 70, or too much, too high of a percentage and then again, you know, put the pressure on the council to have to do a significant tax increase in any one year. We want it to be open to kinda your decision-making on when and if you should do those type of increases. So that's kinda the general thought process that I put that on paper. But according to, you know, what Taylor and what I've reached out to, the state auditor, we do need to distinguish how we're gonna use those funds and include it in the resolution.
Appreciate that. I think the biggest numbers that we would probably be looking at is more like the percentages.
Yeah.
Because the rest are just estimations.
That's right.
You know, because it's from year to year, that could change in a positive, maybe a little less. So I think the percentages is what we probably ought to be looking at if we're gonna revisit this and look at it. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to the, all the council and let you guys digest this, what you think, what we, what possible changes, additions, deletions, what you would like to do.
I would like to propose for 2025 that we increase that percentage to 25% for transportation. I think that our budget can absorb that and still be, still be whole. And I'd like to just, as much as we can, put that towards transportation. And I think 25% would be, I had a conversation with Wes and we kinda talked about some different ways to look at that. And I would be more happy to increase that number as much as we can. And I think 25% would be good for 2025.
And then it just...
Knowing that we would revisit. I don't think we need to accept any increases, like, for right now. Let's not set that in stone. We need to revisit it as we look at it, but that is, our basic commitment is 25% to transportation. And then as much as, you know, I'd hate to put something there that we can't reach, knowing that we want to do as much as we can. Right? So rather than saying it's gonna go up exactly those increments, we need, we'd need to make sure that's what our, like Wes said, we might, if we do that exactly like that, then we're gonna have to maybe go back to the taxpayers for more. then we're going to have to maybe go back to the taxpayers for more property tax. So we need to make those decisions each year as we go, but the general idea I like.
And I'd like to start with twenty-five percent.
You're talking about for fiscal year twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty-six.
This, no, we're doing the twenty twenty-five budget.
Of the implementation, so implementing this tax at twenty-five percent transportation, seventy-five percent safety.
For our twenty twenty-five budget, we're going to get that revenue in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Starting in April, we'll have, we'll have nine months of that revenue. That's what we're, that's what we're trying to set in resolution tonight, I believe, is, is the, the percentages for the twenty twenty-five budget.
Will any of that.
That'll throw off our.
Cause.
They throw our budget off.
We, we could have some use of, of surplus if we do that in twenty twenty-five. We do have, you know, we talked through some of the department costs, like vegetation management and roads that we could use transportation dollars towards. But we also have, you know, some Class C road funds. We have a transportation sales tax that we already get. And so I imagine it would change the fund balance a little bit. Is it going to be detrimental one way or another? No, I don't, I mean, you might use a little bit of funds, fund balance there as well.
Can I ask a question? So we're missing the first quarter of two thousand twenty-five because we didn't file in time. So what's the filing time so we have a whole year?
So they do it every quarter.
Right.
So.
But I want to.
If we want it.
To file, because when we file the next time, we need to know what we're going to be doing as far as transportation.
Would need to.
So I know, looking forward when we're doing that.
Would need to do it by October first.
Okay.
For the January first date.
What else?
So I think the main thing, again, we can come back in six months, nine months, and make, make a change to how we're doing the percentages and redo another resolution if we want to change it a little bit, but.
Wait a minute, we can change mid-year, what we've already decided now?
We, we can change up to four times a year. We can change any quarter.
Okay.
As long as we go through the process.
Then I'm in support of the twenty-five percent, because we need to do something on the transportation side.
For the, for twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
And if we're in Dutch, we got to be quick in adjusting in by the quarter.
How much is, is that going to throw off our budget for twenty-five?
I don't think it's, I don't think it will very much because of the, when you look at the transportation budget that we have anyway, and the portion that was going to come out of the general fund, we're just replacing some of that. We'd be, it's, there's, there's some of it, like the Class C roads and the transportation sales tax, those are restricted funds. But there's a portion of it that was not restricted. And that, that, I think, is.
There is a portion that's funded with property tax, as well as we've got some capital projects that could be funded with transportation. So is the intent with that twenty-five percent, maybe the next question we should ask is, do you want it set up as a restricted fund in the general fund? Do you want to fund it to the cog fund on the twenty-five percent? Because I can set it up in the general fund for now and just have it restricted. And as we have more discussion and thought, you can decide what, you know, how that should be used, even in six months.
I don't want to paint ourselves in a corner so bad yet.
I think that was the intent for twenty twenty-five, was to keep it in the general fund, restricted for transportation.
Yeah, the main thing tonight is just at least get something into a resolution on what you'd want to do, so we can get it adopted by the Tax Commission. That's really what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, and if you guys don't agree, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to show our good faith and get it as high as we could without making a problem with a budget that we've already approved.
Catherine.
Mr. Chair, um, the requirements with the State Tax Commission is that we have, I'm just asking for clarification from Taylor, that we have a percentage designated of how it's going to be used and, and that it's in resolution, correct?
I think you could describe it, whether it's percentage or dollar amount even, you could say, hey, I'm going to commit a million, a million and a half.
Have gotten that from the State Tax Mission before tonight. It's just resolution is adopted.
Says that we have to specify the percentage of the revenues the county.
Okay.
That will be allocated to those fund uses or for.
And that has to be done by January, by December thirty-first, right?
Yeah, so we have to submit that before January first.
Okay.
So based on my reading, it's a percentage.
Okay. Thank you, I just want to make sure we've got.
Sounds right.
With what we did, and sorry, I wasn't here last week, the problem with what we did last time.
We didn't describe, we just said we were going to use it towards public safety and transportation. Go ahead.
Didn't adequately allocate and break down where those funds were.
We, what it was is we add, we did add the word roads to, or transportation, you know, to that resolution. In adding, in adding that, that basically gave two avenues of public safety and roads for us to use that money. We had not differentiated as to how much or a percentage, which was going to go where.
Specifics.
So that's what it's correcting.
Okay.
Which I.
Differentiate them until we pass it.
Got you, okay.
And I, and Barbara and I, we had talked about that, and I was glad that Barbara actually brought that up. Because I thought that, that gives us that flexibility, we can get established, and then we, every year, we can even put more and more, and we can work that and, and even build that. I think that we would have a little bit of flexibility, would we not? Also, if we are, for example, if we are just a little bit short in, could we probably pull some of the municipal services fund money?
Into transportation.
Transportation to.
So.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying, we put that in the general fund, and then we could offset if we're, you know, we're not looking as good as we hope to be looking this next year in revenues.
So just think of municipal services as, it's not countywide. It's, so it needs to be used on things that are non, you know, projects that are not countywide, unincorporated.
But again, that would free up money, you know, for this other thing to actually balance, what we need to balance.
So having said that, I, I would be fine with the proposal that Sandy said with the twenty-five percent transportation and the seventy-five percent public safety.
What do those numbers look like with that?
Yeah, that's what I think we need to, to look at. Sales tax.
That's the initial year.
Yeah, for twenty twenty-five, it would be that much, and then if, if we stick with the twenty-five percent, it would be an additional two point two million for the roads.
So in the, in the initial year, you'll use about, well, you could replace some of those costs, as Sandy mentioned, that are transportation related. But you could, you could end up using million to million and a half in fund balance, possibly. I'd say probably closer to a million, but.
That was my recollection, that's if we give up that twenty-five percent, we'll have to dig into fund balance.
Yeah.
But isn't there that much already in the transportation budget?
So I want to say we had around a half a million capital projects. And there are roads and vegetation management that exceed Class C and transportation costs, I believe. But I, I just haven't had the time to dive into the detail of the numbers to really be a hundred percent sure there. But I would anticipate you're going to use some fund balance, I just don't, don't know exactly what.
So then, Wes, you're showing twenty-five percent this, for twenty-five, twenty-five percent for twenty-six. Then are you going to jump up to forty for twenty-seven? How is that working?
Then the conjecture, we don't, we don't have to.
We'll make that decision. It's like.
So.
Basically, and this would be a motion or something from somebody to basically change.
To appropriate seventy-five to public safety, twenty-five for.
Transportation roads.
Just for then year.
Twenty-six.
Don't, don't for.
Okay.
That would be set, and then each year we could come in and we can.
Or each quarter.
We can change it and boost it.
Each year it'd be seventy-five, twenty-five, unless we changed our mind.
Correct.
And that would take first, take place April first.
Correct.
Of twenty-five. Okay.
And I'm hoping that does grow. But I have, I've dug into some other things, and I've kind of, I've, uh, had some great conversations this past week, but I know we, as a county, we are, we're funding quite a bit of things that, you know, the cities are using, the jail, public defenders prosecution, things like that, you know. Some of them are, some of them have their own, but, you know, it's kind of a, I, I, you know, I think it's good to, maybe as we look down the road and we not necessarily raise property taxes, but as we start getting better control of a lot of the other different things, to keep pushing the, the bigger percentage for roads.
Right.
As we're looking at it, and do what we have to, look at it maybe each fall and.
Well, and I think, go, sorry, go ahead.
No, you're fine.
I was going to say, Matt Phillips is bringing a transportation plan to you. I think that will really give you more direction on what to do down the road. When we, you know, we see more of the details of what the county would potentially fund in transportation and what cities would fund, I think that'll give us more direction on, you know, what to do with future funding. And at the same time, you know, we, you can decide, we're going to leave fifty percent of it in public safety and fifty percent in transportation. It's really up to, to the council to decide as we get more information.
Wes, how, you know, with the twenty-five percent, how is that going to affect public safety? What, are we going to be having to cut any programs or anything like that for public safety?
No, any changes in twenty-five, I would anticipate would use fund balance and wouldn't make changes there.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that for the resolution tonight for the twenty twenty-five year fiscal year that we set our percentages at twenty-five percent for transportation, seventy-five percent for public safety for our sales tax.
Bill, second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we, I guess that'd be basically amending.
Well, and I would say, if you're going to amend, don't necessarily just do it for twenty-five. Maybe just simply amend it to seventy-five, twenty-five.
Yeah.
And then that will take until we change it.
Okay, thank you, I would.
Okay.
Yes.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Yeah, it has been moved and seconded that we amend resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight imposing the county options, sales tax, public safety, and establish a percentage for seventy-five percent public safety and twenty-five percent for transportation roads. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
So with the changes that you're making in the twenty-five year, I will just plan on bringing it as an amendment in March, when we do our first budget opening, to adjust for the changes there.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you, Wes. And Brittany.
My, my, I guess the next question, as we do that, my, I get, one big question is, as we put that in transportation, I guess we then ought to have, start having some discussion as to where to send that, to make sure those dollars get the best use possible.
And I think, I think too, when we have maybe a kickoff to this next year, be an opportune time when we do it, you know, our strategic meeting and get together with department heads to kind of discuss kind of your, your priorities as a council and get input from you guys on how you want to use those transportation dollars and kind of factor that into future budgets.
We probably ought to extend a little bit further, and Mr. Gilbert, will you attend those strategic plan things? I think that he ought to have a, that he ought to come and share everything he needs, make sure that.
Yeah.
Where it's not just us as a county.
That'd be great.
Talking about those dollars, so. Go ahead, Mark.
Mr. Chair, Andrew has pointed out a good housekeeping point to make, so I would propose, or I would like to make the motion that we amend the language in resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight, replace the word roads with transportation.
I think I said transportation roads.
Did you say it in the, what's written, what was published, just says roads, so.
There's second on that?
Second.
Moving seconded, that we correct the right terminology to say roads?
Transportation.
Transportation, good, because I'd already said that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy.
It's unanimous, so. Andrew, you're becoming a dang good hound dog. You're good. Appreciate you on that very much. No, it's serious, it keeps us on our toes, what we need, and we appreciate that, because we're not the professionals that you guys are. At this point, let's go back to budget.
A.
The opening of the budget, let's talk about that, and any discussion there, it is open up for discussion, that, what we need to do there.
So we've, we've got a use of fund balance of one point two million, one, two, four, six.
More than we had anticipated.
I think in some of it.
The seven million we were already.
So that is excluding both the capital and ARPA, correct? So.
So that is, that's in addition to the seven.
But the ARPA's are restricted anyway. So it's just pulling those out. You know, just basically just pulling those out.
Of the fund.
For ARPA, no matter what, anyway. The pers, the, the amount is basically, when we're calling it fund balance, and really, in reality, it's, it has to be gone that way anyway, so, but the, how about that, that's kind of less restricted, that we're talking, it's going to come out of that.
So the unrestricted amount was that one point two, one point two, four, six. So in, in unrestricted fund balance, we're using.
Okay.
Look at it for, let me see this in the sheriff's department.
I think what might be helpful too, to the council, is maybe providing a projection through year end that'll give you some updated information on where we think the year will end. You know, based on just, just actuals, looking at actuals and a projection, rather than, you know, budgets across a lot of departments. Because I know there's a lot of departments, if you look at the financials, that aren't spending their full.
Yeah.
Amount, and so.
Oh, so how much we will add to fund balance?
I don't know that we'll be adding to fund balance this year. I don't, I don't foresee that. I mean, that's why we are doing some fairly significant tax increases, you know, with both property tax and sales tax.
You're talking twenty twenty-four, though.
So you say.
This is all about twenty twenty-four.
You fund actual, actuals to end of year twenty twenty-four in relation to what they budgeted, or what were you saying your actuals are for twenty twenty-four?
All unspan, unencumbered POs, all that stuff, all that that comes back to general fund.
I guess maybe just clarify what I'm saying is, we ought to provide you maybe some more up-to-date financials that are more closer to year end, along with maybe some projections on where we think we'll end the year, so you can get a better idea on how much fund balance we're going to use. I do anticipate we'll be using some fund balance in the twenty-four fiscal year.
Additional fund balance.
Well, we will be using some additional with these amendments too.
Yeah.
But I do anticipate beyond these amendments that we were going to be eating into fund balance. We had done a projection where I think we said we would use, you know, between six and seven million when we were preparing the twenty-five budget. And so maybe providing a more up-to-date and seeing where we're going to end the year at would be helpful.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does that answer?
With that in mind, though, we've got to deal with what we have here in front of us.
Thank you.
Our resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty.
Well, I'll make a motion, my last one.
You have to, you would have to suspend the rules on this one.
That we approve the adjustments and changes to the twenty twenty-four budget.
That we approve the adjustments and changes to the 2024 budget and approve the budget amendment as presented to us. Resolution 2024-30.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules and approve Resolution 2024-30, opening, the opening of the 2024 budget for December. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that means that we don't have to have another meeting.
Thank you.
Is that okay? Anyone complaining?
We have two Tuesdays left.
Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve.
Yeah, we can do it.
Well, with that in mind, I do want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Serious.
You too.
This has been a, a wild ride here these past few months, and it'll be refined for next year, I know. We've got some neat things ahead, neat changes, what's happening. I think as we embrace them and dig into it earlier as a council and, and just basically get going, I think we'll be, you know, I think we're, we're ready for it for next year. Next year will just be fun. But serious, if we don't see each other in that, Happy New Year. I think there was a thing that you sent out about meeting the coach.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Thursday?
Thursday at 3:00 in, in this room.
In this room.
Mayor Danes and I, we'll together a little meet and greet. If you'd like to come and meet the new football coach, that'll be in this room.
Okay. Any others? I'll accept the motion to adjourn for, actually for the year, if you could.
It's all moved.
Seconded.
Segue adjourned, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We're adjourned.